Would all please rise and applaud the lead to qualify brief moment of silence. Rodham Julius in the flesh.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel here.
Commissioner Vogler.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here. We're officers reports and comments. Do we have any? We're looking out at the audience. I'm not saying that real officers are represented if they're up. Public comments? Do we have any members of the public who should make comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to fiscal and contractual. We'll try to move through these repository bids as fast as humanly possible. There's only one rejection, which is number seven, which is Evan Francois for a posser property located Park Avenue, oh two dash two three oh oh or oh two dash two three oh seven zero zero, City of Newcastle. Everything else is accepted. So this first one is in Union Township bids by Charles Brown for a posser property located Rapsin Avenue, thirty four dash one one two seven oh one. Bid amount was five hundred dollars, been approved by the Union Township Supervisor's School District to not return requests. We will make this resolution twenty twenty-two dash
Two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five. Do we, I'll tell you what, we'll run through these until we get to seven and then we'll just take them and bulk or reject seven and then get through the rest of them. Make them bid somewhere. We're starting at two sixty-five. Next one is Rebecca for Nicholas Simon for a posser property located on Rebecca Street. Parcel ID number oh six oh three three seven zero zero, bid amount five hundred dollars, been accepted by the city and rejected. Oh, I'm sorry, accepted by the city and no response from the school district. That will be two sixty-six. Uh, next up Nicholas Simon, five hundred dollar bid for a posser property located at Rebecca Street, oh six dash oh three three six zero zero, City of Newcastle. Again, accepted by the city, no response from the school district, two sixty-seven. Two sixty-eight. Um, Nicholas Simon, Rebecca Street, oh six oh three three five zero zero for five hundred dollars. Two sixty-nine. A posser property from Devon Johnson for a property located at seventeen oh one South Jefferson Street, uh, oh eight dash oh seven seven zero zero zero, City of Newcastle, it's five hundred dollar bid. And two seventy for Citywide Development Corporation. A posser property located at East Washington Street, parcel ID number oh two dash one three eight one zero zero. Are, this might be my, you know, inexperience here. Are corporations, are nonprofit allowed to bid on repository properties? It has to be an individual?
To the best of my knowledge, they are permitted.
Permitted?
Best of my knowledge.
Okay. I'm fine with Citywide Development Corporation. I mean, those guys hopefully put it in good use, but I've never seen a corporation bid on one before. Um, all right, unless there's any questions or comments on two sixty-five for two seventy, um, I will take a motion, uh, to approve all of this.
Send it second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Um, question on motion. Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, this is our only one that was rejected, two seventy-one. Mr. Evans Francois for two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm assuming he's a veteran and is part of that veterans program that we implemented last year that allows that for a half off discount for repository properties. But regardless, uh, he failed to submit the required paperwork, um, because it relates, um, purchasing repository properties and for so for that reason, he was, uh, rejected by the city. Um, so to that end, what we'll do here is we'll take a motion to, uh, approve the bid and and assuming we follow the city's, city example, we're voted down. So I'll take a motion to approve, uh, two seventy-one.
Send it second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on the motion. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. And then the last one, this is the last one, this is the last one. Two seventy-two Lynn Hannah for the posser property located at Brookley Avenue, oh three dash oh five four six zero zero uh, for five hundred dollars, uh, bid and on the city accepted the bid, school district did not respond. I'll take a motion on that.
Send it second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on motion. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no advertiser bid proposals or received bid proposals. We do have a number of warrant registers, um, dated September ninth, September eighth, September seventh, September sixth, and September second. Controller's office is going to lower board. But I'll take it my colleagues a minute to check, probably more than a minute, check those over and then take a motion to accept and file warrant registers.
Send it second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on motion. All in favor, please move up a second. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next, approval of minutes from Tuesdays, September sixth. Um, and again, I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and then take a motion to approve the minutes or make any changes as necessary.
Send it second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on motion. All in favor, please move up a second. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We only have one presentation of written communications today. It's Act fourteen, notification regarding Mercer Street Replacement Project. Um, applicants Columbia Gas, uh, project description purposes of both projects is to install approximately nine thousand five hundred and fifty-seven feet of new two-inch forest and six inches diameter natural gas pipeline with existing CTA utility uh, in public rights away in the City of Newcastle, Lawrence County for purposes of system maintenance and improvement of Columbia Gas, uh, Pennsylvania, uh, natural gas pipeline system. Uh, pipeline services will be installed via direct burial project will be located along Allen Avenue and several intersected roads. Access to the project will be from existing roadways. Total disturbance of the project will be approximately one point one two acres. Project area discharges to an unnamed tributary to the Shannon Creek. Uh, project will minimally impact the Shannon Creek. It's need site construction runoff flow to upstream unnamed tributaries after traveling over land. A P A G O two application for projects being prepared for submission to Conservation District. So. Dan, this one will be coming before you, I assume shortly, and your capacity is conservation director. Um, and on that note, I'll take a motion to accept and file correspondence.
Send it second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on the motion. All in favor, please move up a second. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any staff that has anything to report above and beyond authority on the agenda? Seeing none. Commissioner reports and comments. Dan, you have four.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Boyd. Good morning, everybody. The only thing I wanted to mention today, uh, the three of us periodically receive a magazine called City and State Pennsylvania. And, uh, as it implies, it talks about different things going on around the state as it relates primarily to government. And, uh, lately they, they tend to do a, uh, a top one hundred of different categories. This particular magazine talked about the Labor Power One Hundred. These are folks in, in the organized labor community throughout the Commonwealth who, who play a major role in their, in their professions. And I was real pleased to see that number forty-two on this list, and Debbie, I'll, I'll give you this magazine when I'm done, was a Lawrence County resident. Uh, many of us know him, Howard Thompson. Uh, it's very brief. If you don't mind, I'll read it. Uh, Howard is the president of Ask Me Council sixteen. And it says, while newly elected Ask Me Council thirteen President Howard Thompson is a road foreman for the Shannon Township, you might say his father paved his path to union leadership. Thompson's father, who I happen to know, do you remember him?
Yes.
Lived down on Pulaski Road.
Yes.
Uh, Thompson's father organized the Shannon workers as a member of the carpenters union years before Howard Thompson joined local twenty-nine oh two as a PDOT employee. Thompson has since held numerous union leadership positions, serving as president of Ask Me District Council eighty-five and until recently Vice President of Council thirteen, which represents sixty-five thousand public and private nonprofit Pennsylvania employees. And I had the pleasure of working with Howard when I was township supervisor out in Shannon. He's been with the road department out there for many, many years. And, uh, uh, he's a good man and he's well deserving, I think, of this recognition. So congratulations to Howard. And, uh, I'm sure his wife's happy for him. Uh, but Debbie, I'll get this to you.
I don't mean to speak out of turn, but I don't know if you've heard that Marion Nicole passed the law.
I did hear that, yes, yes. Did you know Marion?
I did not.
Lived, uh, lived right near the township building. Yeah, Iceman. Anyway, I just want to congratulate, uh, Howard Thompson. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman.
Absolutely. All right, four's yours.
I don't have much other than I'm, I am feeling better and getting back up to par, but glad to be here for today's meeting.
Good to have you, boys.
Thank you.
Dan, I'm good for that.
Thank you.
Uh, C Y S, we have, uh, Mike and Lisa with us today. Um, please keep this clear. Answer all the rules slightly. And we'll start with, uh, resolution.
Two seventy-three.
Two seventy-three. Thank you, sir. Yes. Um, so two seventy-three, two seventy-four, thank you, two seventy-five, two seventy-six, two seventy-seven, two seventy-eight. Uh, so we're going from two seventy-three to two seventy-eight, starting with Adelfway and ending with the Republic of Illinois, Pennsylvania for data sharing. Um, so if you guys would be able to give us an overview, I don't think we need to go into in-depth on these unless one of my colleagues, you know, requests it. Um, as again, they're all renewals and, and we've been here for roughly this time last year. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, uh, Adelfway Billings, you know, we've been with this for a while and C Y S, the JPO shares this. If you can see on the second page, it, it shows the rates, uh, most of them five percent. There's a few, uh, eleven and seventeen percent JPO shares with the fentanyl is independent living and, uh, male intensive, you know, JPO.
Any questions, comments? All right, um.
And then a Braxis, that's the next one, Portnoy Braxis. Uh, we share that too with JPO and it, it shows on this page, uh, most of them, if it reads at five percent. I didn't know if you have any.
And then the ones that have a, a greater increase of a percentage are, is Vanessa's playing catch-up. Uh, past years where we may have gotten increased, uh, the per diem at this point in time to catch up with everything, um, the other counties are, are paying. We are showing a hu, a, a larger increase, but the dollar amount from one county to the next is still the same. So we're paying the same as Alachita County, et cetera. But Alachita County's percentage maybe was only seven or eight because they've been receiving increases over the last multitude of years. So that's why it looks as though there's a larger increase for us and it is, except that, you know, we haven't, um, provided increases over the past few years. So we're playing catch-up at this point.
H S B.
In the services center, that's, um, local organization, they provide services for juvenile probation for active care. So when a juvenile is removed from the home, uh, we start active care services immediately, uh, working on getting that child back into the home and getting that home prepared to receive the child following placement. So that is a continuation of services, uh, with them. We've been using that for years. And it's very beneficial, like I said, to be able to work with the parents in the home while the child's removed, but then also, uh, reintegrating them back in the community, helping that transition be as soon as possible so that we don't have to have immediate removal or diem for any reason.
Deborah O.
Deborah O, all we pay for is clothing, personal clothing allowance. I mean, even though it went from four dollars to eight dollars, but you still only pick twenty percent of that. Uh, currently we have two children. We had three last year for about three quarters of the year. We have now two.
Pretty sweet, very nice. What the hell, tougher on negotiation. Uh, White Deer Run.
White Deer Run is a COFAPP. That is a sex offender, uh, treatment facility that we just started using last year because of the name of those. Um, we've had increased, um, charges from sexual nature, sex offenses. Um, this is a secure program. We actually have two juveniles there at this time. Um, one will probably be the long-term, uh, placement. So we are as much leaving their services in this sort of treatment facility.
And, uh, data sharing. For sharing data with Commonwealth, we've, we've, uh, we've done this one a couple of years prior. Um, it's just basically a, a wide Commonwealth access to our data.
Uh, it is.
From, yeah, from C Y S for their own internal planning purposes, but we have to do the agreement because they just technically ours and so we send it over. So that might have been a problem last year.
Yeah.
John dropped it off.
Yeah.
Oh, did he? Uh, uh, okay. He's all set.
John fell down.
All right, I'll take a, a motion to approve two seventy-three through two seventy-eight.
Send it second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on motion. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you keeping up.
Thank you.
All right, two seventy-nine. We have, uh, folks from the jail here with us today, um, to extend our, uh, RSAT program until March thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. How you doing, Dr.?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. What do we have going on?
Okay, so we're just looking to extend the RSAT program, which provides individual improved treatment for substance abuse offenders.
Questions, comments?
No.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve, uh, two eighty.
So.
Uh, two seventy-nine. Two seventy-nine.
Okay. Just, just for record keeping, this is a, uh, from the jail. We had our visitor a couple of weeks ago that suggested that we should acknowledge who is stepping up to the microphone. So I just wanted to make that attempt to, to do that. I said we would try to do it. So this is actually, you pretty much run the program and it's something that you've done for how many years now?
Three years.
Three years, okay. And it's good that it continues to get a continuation because it is a, um, a vital service from the jail. Thank you.
Was the G P returning Lisa's?
Lisa as well.
Okay, that's where I was, I thought, if that's what I thought your name was, but I was like, there's no way that both Lisa and that's why I was trying to straighten around the name. Anyways.
That's it. That was it. It's more, uh, Dan, maybe you had some.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll do my second and then ask a quick question.
Yeah.
Okay, um, make the motion.
Second.
Okay.
And may I direct to, uh, Commissioner Steele-Vogel? In your capacity as chair of the prison board, I, and I realize this is just a, a simple technical procedure that we have to go through, but was this ever,
we, we're not.
Ever made aware that this was going to be happening?
I think sometimes it happens is it's just because it's continuation.
Right.
It's the contract that we have to sign.
Right.
We just send it through. And we can do it today and then at our prison board meeting, we can certainly bring it up at.
Make sure the other four know about it.
Yes, I, I don't think anyone would, would be against it. I do.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Those are sometimes things that, that slip through the cracks. So.
I couldn't remember.
Yes.
Uh, with my bad memory, I thought, well, maybe you did talk about it, but it's no problem. I mean, as you probably know, the Board of Commissioners has the authority that are into contracts, which is why it has to go through this process. But if, if we're going to let the other four members know.
Do that, yes.
Works for me, so I'll reiterate my second.
Cool. My motion is second and for discussion. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next, two eighty, um, this is a resolution, um, relating to our paving, potential paving project outside resealing via parking lots. I'm actually going to recommend that we, uh, we deny the bid and take these out next year. Uh, the bids came in a lot higher than what we originally anticipated. Uh, I think our original quote was like eighteen thousand dollars. Um, which i- in terms of the capital budget, we'd be straining our, our unallocated course of the capital budget to accomplish this. And on top of that, Frank McCary brought up a good point. I was talking with him this morning. We have all those lights coming in next week in terms of insulation. If we get truck traffic and a lot of stuff on the sealant right after it's sealed, it might, you know, it might not, uh, it might not be so great.
That won't be the first thing that we've done inside out with that.
No, in fact.
I don't want to make light of the bid.
Yeah, but that's.
I have a concern with, with, you know, doing this and now that just sort of brings it to light that, well, maybe we do need to wait because I know we wouldn't put the turf down, then some of it had to be listed because it did sidewalk. Dan, I'll defer to you. I mean, if we put something out as the senior person, if we put something out, is it o, is it okay that we just, could we?
We do, we could, we have, we have the right to either postpone or reject a bid. And, uh, was your thought to postpone it for the time being?
My thought was, I want to reject it.
Or did you want to just reject it?
Gas prices are falling, which means the cost ceiling's going to fall, uh, which in turn means, I think, if we, if we loop back around maybe in spring of next year, uh, we might, number one, we might be able to get better cost on it.
Yeah.
Uh, again, our, our original estimate was sort of eighteen thousand. Um, and then number two, again, I have some concerns relating to timing, so we don't continue or about the courtyard.
Wasn't a portion of this going to be paid for through M H D S?
That's correct, but only a portion, uh, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that works, which is again, we've done everything inside out with that.
With that, with that, okay.
Projects.
On a, on a somewhat latest note, uh, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you? We've probably all got questions about what's going on over on the triangular piece of property. Would you mind a little bit what we're doing?
Yeah, so the, what we're, what we're doing there, um, and the, the cost for that was under the bid thresholds. We just had, uh, uh, G P handle it. Um, we're digging up the retaining wall there. The retaining wall's fallen down.
Falling down.
Uh, and it'll just, the retaining wall's going to be removed and instead of putting another retaining wall in, it'll be flattened out. It's going to grade it. Grade it. There, I don't, I don't believe by the time it'll be done, there'll be a sidewalk on that side, um, either, which will be less maintenance on our end. It'll only have the sidewalk, but into government center. Um, but otherwise that's, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Not to split hairs, but, but when you say sidewalk, you mean the sidewalk on County Longing Street would, would go away? But the sidewalk on East Washington Street would stay.
Yes, 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 yeah, yes.
And, and am I also correct in that the cost is being handled through the safety grant that we received from either P Corp or P Comp? So the cost is not a general fund cost.
Yes.
It's a safety grant cost, so, um, because I've had some people call and say, well, what are you building now? They're not building anything.
There, there was, there was old foundations there back a long time ago when there were still houses on that block. I think Andrew Henley actually posted a nice thing. I don't know if you saw it on the, I don't know if you saw on the Historical Society Facebook page the other day relating to the history of that lot and some of the different, some of the different structures that used to be on it, um, as well as the ownership of the str, I can't believe you can pull that data. It's actually kind of incredible. Um, so there, they had to dig up some footers there, um, that had just been left
Right.
from, you know, nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, whenever that parcel was, was, like those houses were torn down. Um, thank you for that. Yeah, absolutely.
Very good.
So this will be, uh, two eighty. And I suppose probably the most appropriate thing to do here, this is awarding and authorizing, I suppose, is just to reject, is, is to make the motion to approve it and then vote down.
Okay.
So I'll take a, I'll take a motion to approve two eighty.
Send it second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on the motion. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Don't worry about that next year. Thank you. It's not a pressing issue. Um, this is another one that I'm going to recommend, um, we denied a bid on, um, the prices, the pricing, it was, first of all, it was a phenomenal proposal. I've never seen so thorough of a document.
Probably more than what we were asking for or thought we were going to get.
A little bit more than what we had anticipated. Um, what we're going to do here, because I still do think it's important to onboard broadband consultant. Um, we're going to go back to the drawing board in terms of the R F P, um, throw some things back on it. I'm going to get with, um, with Baker Yon, Michael Baker, um, and talk to them about, you know, what caused their price points to, you know, it become that high.
Right.
Um, and, uh, uh, you know, potentially have another one out here by the end of the year. But I will say that, that as it currently stands, we can't, we can't afford to pay roughly two million dollars out of ARPA to do a, uh, to do a comprehensive broad
You're proposing a re-advertising eventually. I, I had a firm contact me after we, uh,
Right.
opened the bid and indicate a desire to, I said, well, we gotta, we gotta take action on, on this first. So there is some other interest, I can tell you that. But I, I would concur with what you're suggesting.
So I, but I will say, I get, I've never seen a more thorough bid proposal. I think they did a phenomenal job on that bid proposal. Um, so, and like I said, I'll, I'll touch back with Jeremy, Andy, and I'll be together. We'll, we'll come up with something to rebid here before the end of the year.
Speaking of, of broadband, and I may have mentioned this to you, but I don't think I had the chance to tell you. You, you may have seen on our calendar that there've been a couple of meetings of a C cap broadband task force that's being chaired by Commissioner Dave Glass out of Clearfield County. He's doing a really nice job. I'm on that committee, but kind of ex officio, I wanted to clarify, if you've wondered, well, what's Dan doing on this, on this committee? Um, they have asked the seven C cap district representatives who serve on the board to more or less sit in on the meetings because eventually they're going to ask each of the seven of us to possibly send correspondence out to the other counties within our district to assemble information that'll go back to them. So I think, I think I told you, maybe I didn't, but I don't, I know I didn't tell you. So I wanted to let you know what that's all about.
Yeah.
And again, Commissioner Glass, uh, he's had two meetings so far and he's done a really nice, and there are a lot of, uh, non-commissioners on this committee. There are some planning people, some G I S people, some I T people from various counties around the Commonwealth.
Yes, it's a good group, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Uh, two eighty-one, and again, we'll do a motion and then, uh, and then, uh, vote it down. Can't go for that. I'll take a motion.
Send it second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion here? Hearing none. Question on the motion. Uh, Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steele-Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Two eighty-two, it's also dealing with American Rescue Plan funding. Um, at the League of Municipalities meeting, um, last week, uh, representative from Department of Conservation, Natural Resources indicated the state, uh, was deploying an accommodation of American Rescue Plan Act funding and state discretionary funding for a fall around of, um, effectively it's, uh, uh, I don't even know what the, what plan program is called, uh, but it's conservation and trails and, and riverways and
Right.
of, of that specific, uh, it's, it's signature grant program. Um, and so as a part, as a component of that, um, municipalities, uh, which have, I want to say under five thousand
Yes.
population, the local match, the local match is only twenty percent. Uh, for popular, uh, municipalities with populations of over five thousand, the local match is fifty percent, which is generally, um, the pro, we've, we've used in planning for Quaker Falls and West Park and Savage and some other areas, but it's generally fifty percent, um, in its normal program. Um, the Board of Commissioners, uh, you know, in our comp, in the county's comprehensive plan, we note, um, that, uh, guiding principles of Lawrence County's development operations include number one, providing greenways and blueways to encourage healthy living and alternative modes of transportation. Two, to provide public recreation areas throughout the county that serve all segments of the population. Three, to protect and enhance our natural resources. And four, to promote healthy living. Um, there are a number of our municipalities out there as well as a number of nonprofits and the Lawrence County Conservation District, which are all eligible for this, um, that have potential projects that they wish to run as it relates to improving parks, public trails, um, and, and other areas the public has access to for recreational, um, entertainment. And so to that end, um, we're creating, uh, twenty twenty-two Lawrence County Recreational Improvement Grant Match Program, um, appropriated, at least in, thank you, at least initially, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, um, appropriated, at least in thinking, at least initially, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to not provide to the municipalities, um, as a direct grant, but to give them as a grant match commitment, um, to allow them to go after the state funding. Um, and so what, what we're doing here, I have a, a just basic program document that we pulled, Amy and I pulled together, um, and will be sending out to the municipalities. Um, what we'll do is, is selected applicants, uh, will receive twenty-five thousand dollars for fifty percent of the total local match requirement, whichever is less, and a grant match commitment for Fall twenty twenty-two round of the apartment, Pennsylvania Department of Conservation, Natural Resources, A R P A Recreation and Conservation Grant Program. On selection, Lawrence County Board of Commissioners will provide the applicant with a formal letter indicating the amount of matching commitment provided by the county of Lawrence to the applicant for submission of the applicant's final grant request to D C N R. Um, and county level match funding will be reimbursed to awardees as expenses are incurred related to project implementation. So they will only receive county money if they get the D C N R grant, um, but we're prepared to match fifty percent of the local matching requirement or twenty-five thousand dollars, whichever is less through our American Rescue Plan funding. I'll note that this also applies to all Lawrence County municipalities, um, nonprofits which have an interest, um, in utilizing the state grant stream as well as the Lawrence County Conservation District. Um, the only other thing I'll note is municipalities, um, due to funding limitations, it's noted as grant offs, will have priority, um, you know, if we get a hun- we're not going to, but if we get a hundred, you know, requests in, our municipalities will take priority
Right.
uh, in the allocation of these dollars. Um, grant turnaround time, their, their grant match turnaround time is gonna be relatively expeditious. Uh, the reason for that is that the, uh, the state grant has a fast turnaround time.
Yes.
By the end of, uh, end of October, uh, all municipalities and all assets must submit their materials and such that, and we've also created an expedited process to, to apply for this. Um, so that way, they, you know, normally require resolutions, under this, because of the quick turnaround time, we're only gonna require, um, signatures from the council president of the borough, the mayor and council president of the third class sitting, uh, chairman of the township board supervisors, C E O or executive director of a nonprofit organization, or the executive director of the conservation district. That will suffice in terms of certification of, of application from the municipality. Um, this will be, uh, due date for our side is October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. To get those back to our planning office, which is basically a month from today, uh, that'll allow us to award, uh, award these at the next Commissioners' meeting and then allow, in turn, the municipality to submit their application to D C N R, um, for consideration by the department. Um, the only other thing I'll ma- I'll, I'll add here before turning it over for any comments from our colleagues is, this is, is taking the ARPA funding that, that we were allocating through the state and leveraging
Yes.
to allow our community to take in more money than otherwise, just through a direct spend of that, of that ARPA allocation. So, you know, for example, let's say that a municipality wants to, you know, wants to do a hundred thousand dollar project, um, and, you know, uh, uh, there are, I mean, it's Vecima, which has a population of under five thousand. Um, you know, the total match would be twenty thousand, Lawrence County would provide ten thousand, but as a result of that, Vecima ships in ten thousand, and then we're able to go out and get eighty thousand dollars from the Commonwealth. So we're really leveraging dollars that we have to provide maximum impact to our communities. Comments, questions from the board?
I just had a conversation about this last night with, with someone, uh, from a smaller municipality, and used almost those exact numbers for, for the sake of making it, it's easy math, and they're like, really, for ten thousand dollars, we could get a hundred thousand dollars? Yeah, pretty much, pretty much, easy application, I wasn't, you know, didn't have the, the
Yeah, beat the trap on the yeah.
material to be, but, right, it's like, absolutely, it can be done. And I don't know how much further to, just briefly looking through this, that the, the process, um, that it's been streamlined, that really, I think, somebody, a municipality making a phone call, maybe to our office or to Planning, to Amy, we're interested in doing this, what is it going to take, put this together, and I think it can be done. And I think from our meeting, the League of Municipalities, I think that, uh, our, our friends are more than willing to, uh, to work with us to get those applications through and get as much as we can get a word from Lawrence County.
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great proposal, and I'm hopeful that, uh, our municipal officials will, uh, take advantage of this opportunity that's being given to them. Thank you both.
Absolutely, thank you. Thirty-six billion dollars in total money available for the state, let's go chase it.
Absolutely.
Um, on that note, I will take a motion to approve twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-two.
So moved, second.
Your motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Vodler, I'm sorry, Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Lady's first.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and we'll have, uh, Amy or Becky make sure that that gets, this gets sent out expeditiously all of the way. Two eighty-three, um, we do this every year, this might be the first time we pass it through a Commissioners' meeting, Vanessa Coffin, it's technically a contract, it must, has to be passed through, again, this is the first year that we, we've done it, but we do this every year. Um, this relates to allowing the Rashini Group, um, located in Indiana, Pennsylvania, they're our healthcare consultants, to prepare our required forms, um, as it relates to the Affordable Care Act, which we have to submit to, um, uh, employees. And I want to say we also have to submit to the federal government, that's one of the feds.
Yes, yes.
Um, by, uh, by, I wanna say the end of September. So they've already started on this, we have the money and the budget for it, we have it every year for it, this just allows the Rashini Group to do that, that paperwork for us. Takes a huge workload off A H R.
Absolutely.
So unless there's any questions or comments, um, I'll take a motion to approve two eighty-four.
So moved.
Second. Your motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two eighty-four, um, this relates, and I'll note that we had a, an informational meeting with the chief assessor yesterday specifically relating to this. Um, a, uh, a resolution, um, to settle as it relates to, um, a, uh, a, a property tax appeal. Um, and I'll note that the appeal was actually initiated, um, uh, through J R said Wampum filed the appeal, not property owners.
Yeah, he did, but unless, unless he's, well, I thought he said that Wampum Borough was a party to, to the appeal, but um, maybe there's some confusion here, because you do have, as you said, Wampum Properties is the actual property owner. And most of this property sits within the Wampum Borough, although, as he pointed out, some of it sits in New Beaver Borough, but, um, I don't know, do you wanna wait and get that clarified?
I don't think, I'm not, I don't know if we have the ability to wait, it sounded like it needed to get done.
We can always amend the resolution.
That's, that's true, he didn't seem to, that's why I wanted to meet with us yesterday, so we could, uh.
Right, right. To get it done.
Uh, uh, okay, I'm fine, and then if we have to tweak anything.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, too, the warehouses are just the intent, whereas now being resolved is the actual resolution. And so it's just a compromise settlement shut above, so even if the Wampum property owner, it should be Wampum Borough as opposed to Wampum Property, as I think the resolution will still stand.
Right. Right.
Um, but we, we're actually settling for a higher amount, this is the first time I've seen a higher amount than what was originally assessed on that property.
He noted that, again, part of, this is the, uh, underground mines down off of Old Route Eighteen, and, and part of this property's in Wampum Borough, part of it's in New Beaver Borough, they, of course, are impacted by this, as is the Mohawk Area School District. But we made note of the fact that that section of Wampum Borough is part of the Mohawk School District, not the Elwood City School District, which most of Wampum Borough is part of, there's a, a boundary down there that many years ago, um, an agreement was made that, that the Mohawk School District would, would, uh, have jurisdiction over that particular area. In fact, there are some students who live in Wampum Borough who actually attend Mohawk High School, whereas most of them go to Elwood, but anyhow. No, I, 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 I agree with what you're suggesting, if, if we find there's an issue, we can always come back to it, too.
Right, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, all right, I'll take a motion to, uh, approve two eighty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Two eighty-five, this relates to our Election Integrity Grant that we received about, maybe, um, I don't even think it was a month ago, I think it might have been a couple weeks ago.
Right.
Um, but this is just amending our, our twenty twenty-two Lawrence County budget to accommodate that increase in funds, as well as appropriate that grant to different areas of the operation to allow us to offset the costs of twenty twenty-two general election. Um, questions, comments on that?
Yeah. I wanna thank, uh, Mr. German, he had some documents to fill out in order for us to be eligible to receive this grant.
Yes.
You, you did that, and we got the money, so.
Yeah.
I'd rather put turnaround on those as well.
Yes, it was.
And Debbie, it spelled out on this document, it did.
Um, take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Um, two eighty-five.
Thank you, second.
Uh, all right, your motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have, um, some additional monies coming into our pre-disaster mitigation grant, um, line items, so we're increasing the revenue and the associated expense account, the reason, Lawrence County mitigation plan update professional services, eighty percent was, our reimbursement was received for, uh, trans ear exercise held in October, will be used for mitigation plan update professional services, chat even again. Uh, no, this, um, we use, uh, hazards with careless words and planning grant to get eighty percent of an exercise we did last year that benefited all the fire, the M S people, actually, police in the alley. Uh, we pay twenty percent of that, so we have to pay for it completely upfront, the state reimburses us. So there's forty-seven twenties of reimbursement from the state, but put it backwards, our hazard mitigation plan, which that speeds up the whole process, and we did that every year, rather than every five years, have the entire thing done, so that's just going back to maintain our hazard mitigation plan, which, plan which we need to, uh, qualify for. Any benefits that would come from the federal government if there was a disaster, it also helps with, um, pre-disaster planning, any type of back during, which, problems, everything, so. That's all of this, usually for an exercise, we'll put that back in. Questions?
Just, just, you know, can't say enough about what good professional department heads we have, and you both
Absolutely.
just in the last five minutes proven that, so thank you both.
Yes.
This is the business side, this is the not-so-fun side.
Right, but it gets done as well, you know, thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve two eighty-four.
So moved.
Second, your motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two eighty-seven, treasurer approached, uh, me, um, last week regarding some additional dollars that he needs to get our, uh, our twenty twenty-three tax bills prepped, ready and sent out. Um, so we're transferring nine thousand from our contingency over to his contingency, and then he'll appropriate that as needed. Uh, and he broke it down pretty well, and Rich is, Rich is, I'll say, I'll say, he's one of the guys that, he, he's anal enough, um, that when he comes and says he needs money, I, I tend to believe him. So, two eighty.
He did send a very detailed email to us, you know.
Yes.
Two eighty-seven, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, this is two eighty-eight. Um, and this is just Liquid Fuels, it's not coming out of general fund, we're moving some money from Liquid Fuels contingency to Liquid Fuels bridge maintenance for some money to state expenses. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second, motion, uh, second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa Spielvogel.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vodler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, removing some money here from, uh, administration, uh, some, some juror money and just to know if there's supplies, um, to cover, some transcript covers. Uh, moving some money from Commissioners' contingency to Commissioners' advertising, to cover some year-end advertising expenses, and moving some money from, uh, personnel's contingency account, five hundred dollars, to materials and supplies for a, uh, over-ear headset. Questions on any of those?
No.
Take a motion to approve, A through C, uh, transfers.
So moved.
Second, it took me a minute to decipher an over-ear headset, that's what you can wear, kind of a portable, you can walk around your office and converse on a phone, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, you know how slow I am about technology.
It took me a minute as well, Dan, I might have caught it a little sooner than you to get it to a minute.
Last year, yesterday, we were talking, and he said he received a text from somebody, and I had this, I was, I fell backwards in my check.
This, this new phone, I do, I do receive texts, yes.
Right.
I haven't figured out how to answer them, usually how I answer them is I call the person, saying, I got your text.
I, not surprised, yeah.
So, I'm halfway there, we're gonna push on group messages now.
You are.
On what, group messages, uh, don't overwhelm.
Oh, no, no, I, I don't think so, no, let's not do that, not for a while, let's not do that.
Please.
Baby steps.
Yes, yes.
That's right.
All right, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, hearing, I've already done that, but any, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, I'll pay a piece of what they're saying. Aye, aye, all of them saying, so I'm, pull off on that, no awardments, is, Commissioner's meeting Tuesday, September twentieth, in this meeting room, prison board meeting September twenty-first, uh, in this meeting room. Planning tomorrow, I think it's in Planning Room, Washington.
Washington.
I was close, what, and any, anything's going on the agenda?
Apparently there's a proposal for a, uh, Taco Bell in Union House.
Yes.
Cause that one tomorrow was.
And there was, there's one other item, but I can't remember what it is.
And then go, some, some mention that.
Oh, okay.
Hey, what, do you know what food's gonna be?
No, I have no idea.
That dictates whatever I go to. All right, I'm adding additional public launch.
Oh, of course, that's, that has to be a question, too.
Yeah.
Okay, first of all, I was surprised to see the triangle meeting going on, too. So how much is that project, and how do you pick contractors for those things that are under budget, under bid amounts?
Did we get both done, or did we just get carried up?
Um, I think we just got carried.
Yeah.
You know, that's a check, it's like, it's kind of.
How do you pick somebody, though?
If it's under the bid threshold, I mean, that's the reason it's under the bid threshold, just since it gets it done expeditiously.
Why?
I mean, that's why the bid threshold's there.
Well, what's the cost of the project?
It's not much, it's like, I think, what, like fifteen?
Yeah, ballpark, fifteen.
And when was that voted on?
It doesn't need to be voted on.
It's an expenditure, right?
Well, I would get, the way we vote on those is the, um, warrant registers, but according to the county code, all it takes to authorize expenditures is two Commissioners to sign off on purchase order, that's where it ends the law.
And another question about the, um, recreational improvement grant program? When municipalities submit their proposals, are those gonna be made public?
Uh, the, when we go to accept them, they will, or deny them, they will, um, but.
Well, forgive me, but they'll have to, at their, if, if it's a municipality, I'm assuming they'll have to discuss it at one of their public meetings.
Right, they work on that every public meeting, so that's why I was wondering if they're gonna be announced here, like we did with the businesses.
Yeah, the ones that we, ones that are approved will all be announced here, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Pardon my interruption, I didn't mean to interrupt. No, I said, I didn't mean to interrupt, word.
Yeah, the fed, with, for the federal money, make sure that all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed in terms of, you know, the voting line, everything, so. Um, all right, any additional, any additional questions, that, that wasn't related to you, that was the message I brought on my phone.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, I have my packet, if you'd like it, and I'll give you this magazine, and this is yours, it, it has your name on it here, so.
Mine?
Yeah, it's all yours. Well, you might be, okay, I don't know what all's in it, so, but I saw your name somewhere, yeah, right there.
Right, yeah. Uh, any additional questions from members of the board, anybody else in the room? Lawrence County Board of Commissioners? Somebody's gonna turn us on.
Are you feeling any better?